Commence this virtual work session of the Washington State Parks and Recreation Commission. I'd like to call it to order and begin with our roll call with our, let's begin with our officers and alphabetical order. I won't trick you, I was supposed to do reverse or something, but in order to give Mark, let's do reverse alphabetical order in order to give Mark a moment to get, to get back online. So a little, so we begin with the officers and then reverse alphabetical order.
Okay, Ken Bounce from Seattle.
Lori Conley from Spokane.
Holly Williams from Vancouver, Washington.
Good morning, Mike Latimer from Yakima.
And good morning, this is Sophia Danenberg from Withy Island. And we are expecting Commissioner Brown to rejoin. He is having technical difficulties, but we will have him introduce himself quickly when he manages to get back online. Director Dupuy, would you like to introduce the staff?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Danenberg. Joining us today, we have Deputy Director Mike Sternback, Administrative Services Director Laura Holmes, our Stewardship Director Lisa Lance, Legislative Director Owen Rowe, Human Resources Director Amber Erdal, Tribal Director Jenna Bowman, and Executive Assistant Becky Ellison. We also have our Assistant Attorney General Andy Wu. In absent are our Operations Director John Crimmins, Parks Development Director Heather Saunders, Communications Director Claire DeLong, and DEI Director Jeanette Chan.
Thank you, and we'd like to begin this meeting with a land acknowledgement. We, Washington State Parks and Recreation Commission, respect and affirm tribal sovereignty and honor Indigenous peoples whose traditional lands we occupy. The State Parks and Recreation Commission is committed to working with all tribes to help preserve and restore a healthy natural environment for future generations. And I hope everybody on the meeting and everybody on television might just take a moment to think about, you know, ways in which they, they can support and really internalize this acknowledgement through action and beliefs. That little last bit I added myself. So Becky, are there any changes to the agenda?
We have no known changes.
Any logistics you'd like to announce other than our technical?
Yeah, so today we're broadcasting this for the public via TVW. We also opened our meeting space, the Moran Room, in the headquarters to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you. And I am going to open up the agenda, which is going to block the screen for a moment, but if you do see Commissioner Brown jump back on, if you could just let him or us know and he'll just go ahead and introduce himself at that moment. So we'd like to begin with our Real Estate and Planning Program Manager Nikki Fields, joined by, is our Planning Manager, Michael Hankinson, online for Planning Program Update.
Here.
Thank you. Um, my, my question is, should I be opening the PowerPoint from somewhere or is Mohar opening it and I'm controlling it?
You open and run it.
Okay. Just a moment. Sorry about that.
Oh, and there you are, Mike, I see you pop up on my.
It's opening now. So, so this presentation is an update from the one that we gave in April, where we talked about our planning priorities. Let me just get this open. Okay, let me share. Sorry about that delay. So today we're going to be talking about our work plan for the planning program. And I'll start by talking about some of the strategy that we had in order to develop this work plan. I'll share with you the work plan and our project timelines. And then each of our planners, it's Michael, Jen, Lauren, and Alex, will give a brief update on their projects for the 2325 biennium. So in developing this work plan, we worked on the assumption that each of our planners is able to work on one or two projects at a time in order to be able to work effectively and make good forward progress on them. And part of our intention in scheduling our projects the way we have is in order to avoid overloading the projects and thus slowing them all down. And another thing in our strategy is that our, our ranking and the prioritization of our projects is based on that prioritization framework that we described to you in April at the, that commission meeting. And so we use that framework in order to be able to score the projects that we'll share with you today and, and be able to rank them as to which one should go first. We also scheduled projects to a first that were those that have shorter deadlines or those that were already in progress in one way or another. So the planning program had a number of projects that started last biennium and due to staffing changes, we had to put them on hold. So those are prioritized as well. And we also wanted to build enough time into our schedule to allow for some amount of unplanned work, because things do come up over the course of a biennium and, and we want to be able to respond to those things. And we want to be able to make some forward progress on some of our strategic initiatives, like updating our acquisition and development strategy, for example, or some work that we're going to be doing to update the classification and management planning process that Michael will talk about a little later. Another thing we did since we last talked is that we've developed a project intake form for planning projects. We talked about that our projects are envisioned by people throughout the agency and sometimes by the public. And then we want to put them through our prioritization framework. And this form will allow us to do that, to be able to collect enough information about each project as it's, as it's brought to us. And then we can use this to score it with the prioritization framework. And here is the work plan that we've developed. It covers the 2020, 2023, 25 biennium and the 2025, 27 biennium. We'll give you more detail on this biennium's projects later in the presentation. The projects that we are working on in 2023, 25 include finishing our, our project to do an update to the master plan at Lake Samamish State Park, completing our master plan and environmental impact statement for Miller Peninsula, doing some planning and thinking about what the future of Tilikum Village of Lake Island State Park should be, completing the camp classification management plan for the Blue Mountain area. That's Palouse Falls, Lions Ferry, and Lewis and Clark Trail State Parks, completing the camp at Ginkgo State Park, and I'm doing some thinking about what the future of Civil War II buildings at Fort Flagler State Park will be. And then doing a camp update to the long-term boundary and land classifications of Riverside State Park in order to include the Glantana property that you, you saw on the tour at the last meeting. And then we have a couple of other projects that are not park-focused, but one of them is to do our planning for the next grant round in 2024 and to develop the grant lists for, for application next year. And as I mentioned, we are looking at our camp process and our products and, and thinking deeply about how to update them as, as we move forward and better align our camp process with the agency's goals. There's also a few other projects that the planning program isn't leading, but I just wanted to mention here in case you had questions about them. One of them is Nisqually State Park. That project is no longer in planning. It is now in the capital process and in design, development, and construction. And another project is the Step Toe Area Camp. This is Step Toe Butte and Step Toe Battlefield. And this project is underway and being led by our Eastern Region Steward, Andrew Fielding. There is also the project to plan for the future of the golf proposal at Westport Light. That one is being led by our executive leadership team. Similarly, the, some thinking about the future of Fort Warden State Park is being led by our executive leadership team right now and will likely also involve our partnerships manager when she comes on. There's also, we're expecting that we'll have some unplanned and emergent work that comes up over the course of the biennium. Next biennium in 2025, 27, these are the projects we anticipate doing. More could happen as things come up. One of them is to do a camp for the Goldendale area parks and another one for the Battleground area parks. We would like to update the master plan for Mount Spokane State Park to do a trail management plan for Willapa Hills Trail and to update the long-term boundary of the Green River Gorge area to consider properties along the north rim, because we did a similar project for the south rim a number of years back. We will also need to do our grant season planning again in 2026. It happens every two years. And then we intend to update our acquisition and development strategy. There were a few other projects that have been talked about, but have not yet been assigned to the planning program. One of them is looking at the future of Fort Simcoe State Park. There is the issue of overnight accommodations and planning for where we should be targeting those. The, I'm thinking about the future of environmental learning centers or retreat centers. And thinking about how planning and climate change adaptation intercept. And then also there'll probably be some, some other things that we're not yet thinking of. This is where the projects that we have on this plan are throughout the state. The pink projects are this biennium's projects and the green projects are next bienniums. Their question was brought up at our last meeting about all of the projects that we talked about at that meeting being on the west side, but you'll see that our work plan is not just focused on the west side. And then here is our, our timeline for our projects. Most of the projects that we're working on now should be done by the end of this biennium. So that's Lakes Mamish, Miller Penn, Lake Island, Blue Mountain, and Ginkgo are all intended to complete around the same time. There's a couple of them that will either need to be done earlier, like the Glantana project, where aiming to get that done so that we can apply for grant funding to start acquiring land there. The Fort Flagler project is delayed a little bit on its start and the grant season planning ends in about February when the, the grant applications end. And the Camp 2.0 is delayed a bit on the start and, and is not expected to take that long. The next biennium's projects are all supposed to start around the beginning of next biennium and be done by the end of next biennium. So now I will turn it over to Michael, who is going to start by telling us about the 2024 grant season planning.
Thank you, Nikki, and good morning, Commissioners. Planning for the 2025, 27 biennium grant season is underway. We are currently determining the widest spectrum of possible projects by engaging across divisions, including Parks Development, Operations, Stewardship, Boating, Winter Rec, and our Trails Program staff. Conversations about potential new developments may include everything from boat launches to trails or park access and more. Other grants will restore fragile habitat. And finally, we're also considering potential land acquisition grants that will create new experiences for visitors, conserve natural lands, or solve management problems. Next slide. Our process includes the coordination of meetings with staff who come forward with project ideas generated from existing lists, such as our tenure capital plan or facility concept plans. They also come as new ideas generated by staff who are working every day in their parks and who are the most qualified to determine needed upgrades to allow the parks to operate more efficiently. We're also thinking strategically about whether a project is still required or if it is no longer a priority. This large group of staff discuss project ideas and vet them to determine priorities and to also determine which grants are actually considered most competitive. Once this list is generated by September, staff will bring this potential list of projects to our executive leadership, the real estate committee, and other key subject matter experts to finalize all our ideas. Next slide. The project list is our primary product. From this, staff write grants that are administered through another state agency, the Recreation and Conservation Office, or RCO. The RCO assembles evaluation committees that are comprised of citizens from all over the state or staff from other agencies, including our own. Grants are usually presented in PowerPoint or sometimes given in written form to these evaluation committee members, who in turn score and rank the projects. And by the way, the commission also participates in the scoring and ranking of our Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program State Parks category grants. This will occur for you in summer 2024. We'll have more information on your role in this process when we see you again in January. Okay, next slide. So grant season spans an entire year. As you can see, winter and spring are the busiest time. Although not quite as hectic, fall includes several critical categories, including boating and trail maintenance grants. So beginning this winter, staff will create a detailed, will create detailed project descriptions, cost estimates, and presentations that explain projects in detail. Next slide. So officially, grant writing kicks off in January when we ask the commission to consider and adopt the staff-recommended list of potential grants. Spring grants are evaluated, scored, and ranked in summer of 2024, and fall grants are completed by winter 2025. Okay, next slide. So now for something completely new, Camp 2.0. Camp stands for Classification and Management Plan. It includes three distinct components in the plan. Long-term boundary, land classifications or zoning of the park, and management plans. State Parks has camped about 76% of the parks in our system since the 1990s. Over the years, we have found that the commission-approved long-term boundary and land classifications serve as essential tools that guide staff to conserve and develop our parks in the most effective way possible. Over time, however, it is recognized that an update is needed to modernize our camps to ensure that they remain effective management documents into the future. Staff plan on addressing these updates in winter 2024. And now Jen Dial will discuss her new project for the Blue Mountains.
All right, thanks, Michael. Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Genevieve. I met all of you back in April in Spokane and I'm looking forward to presenting to you on some of our work. So I'm going to give you a quick update on the Blue Mountain Area Camp and what we're going to do to complete that. As Nikki mentioned earlier, our team wants to complete several ongoing planning projects this biennium. The Blue Mountain Area is one of those. And before I get kind of into the details of what's remaining on that, I just want to give us an overview of where things left off. It was back in January of 2022 that our planning staff presented recommendations to all of you to update the land classifications and long-term park boundaries at three parks within the Blue Mountain Area. That included Palouse Falls, Lions Ferry, and Lewis and Clark Trail State Parks. At that time, it was additionally decided to change the name at Palouse Falls State Park to a heritage site, along with specific park area closures to protect cultural resources and improve public safety. So the remaining element to really consider the camp complete for, for this area is development of a management plan, and I'll talk about that in, in the next slide. So in alignment with our work plan goals to close out nearly completed projects, I'm in the beginning stages of pulling together a team to develop the management plan for the Blue Mountain Area and most specifically at Palouse Falls. The management plan captures the needs and recommended management strategies that arose throughout the camp planning process. This document is intended to serve the regional operations staff and the capital team as they plan for the next implementation phase. We're aiming to have the management plan finalized and the camp officially completed by late summer of next year. And in addition to the management plan, I'm also in the early stages of re-engaging with the original tribal work group that was integral to the development of the Blue Mountain Camp recommendations. The first meeting of this work group is intended to take place this fall, and I'm hoping to facilitate an ongoing conversation and partnership to inform planning efforts associated with the protection of cultural resources, ADA improvements, trail updates, habitat restoration, and other public safety projects at Palouse Falls. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Lauren to give you an update on Ginkgo.
Thank you, Jen. Good morning, Commissioners. I will be presenting on Ginkgo Petrified Forest State Park this morning. Work on Ginkgo, on the Ginkgo camp started in 2019. Stage one identified the issues and stage two explored alternatives for the camp, for this planning process, and these are, these two stages are complete. The products include the first drafts of the proposed alternatives, which were presented to the commission back in April 2021. And during that stage of the project, it was determined that the environmental impact statement would be necessary to fully, to fully understand any potential adverse impacts that recreation use and development will have on this culturally and ecologically significant landscape. Due to changes in staffing in the camp, the camp process was paused in late 2021. And now that we're fully staffed and restarting, staff will be re-engaging with tribes and hosting a site visit to address several sensitive cultural resource issues. Additionally, staff are developing the scope of work for the EIS and staff in September, in, in September, staff will be advertising for a request for qualifications or RFQ, and that will be to onboard a consultant to conduct and complete the EIS for state parks. Stage three is defining the preliminary recommendations of the camp, and that process will commence and include re-engagement with stakeholders and the public. And on the next slide, I'll discuss a little, a little bit of our timeline here for the next year and a half, two years. This is a snapshot of the proposed work that we will be doing between now and June of 2025. The proposed project timeline illustrates major milestones for the remainder of this planning process. The most prominent of these for this year will be onboarding the EIS consultant and commencing with the EIS scoping period prior to the close of this year. We will spend the first three quarters of 2024 working with the consultant to draft the EIS and camp documents. And then additional public and tribal engagement will occur throughout the remainder of the process, and we'll be aiming to issue a final EIS and camp documents during the first quarter of 2025. And now I'll turn it over to Michael to talk about Lake Sam.
Thank you, Lauren. Lake Samamish's original vision was established by the commission in 2005 when they recognized the park's most important attributes, its natural areas surrounded by urban development. The commission stated sustainability as park purpose. The commission's vision foresaw the park as a statewide model for engaging the public in protection and restoration of urban natural areas. By 2007, the commission reaffirmed their vision by directing staff to create a park for the 21st century that will be an innovative model for the state's diverse system of recreational, cultural, historical, and natural sites. And specifically, the commission said, "Lake Samamish State Park will be Washington's signature park for protecting and celebrating urban natural areas, showcasing regionally significant wetlands and wildlife habitat, while enriching the lives of visitors and providing a valued legacy to future generations." Next slide. And since that time, the park's most valuable attributes within its 520 acres, its wetlands, over 20 watercourses that feed its three creeks, including Izziquah Creek, and its iconic shoreline on Lake Samamish, have been greatly ecologically improved. Today, visitors recreate and experience native plants, waters, insects, fish, and other animals in a natural setting surrounded by intense urban development. Since 2007, our partners at Mountains to Sound Green by Trust have organized countless stewardship work parties intended to save salmon habitat and to preserve a natural landscape that can be experienced by visitors, a natural landscape that has mostly otherwise vanished on Lake Samamish. Importantly, this restoration has provided a new setting for visitors to experience nature more fully. 62 acres restored since 2007. And to help you visualize that, 62 acres translates as 47 football fields, 65,000 native trees and shrubs planted by 20,000 community volunteers, 85,800 hours of volunteer time, which translates at $20 an hour to $1.7 million of in-kind value donated to state parks. And more than 5,500,000 in grants and financial support was secured to date from countless businesses, foundations, cities, King County, state, and federal sources. So finally, public access to Sunset Beach was also enhanced with the key completion of the children's playground and bathhouse, an innovative building designed to integrate into the landscape with places to picnic under shelter and restrooms. Next slide, please. In 2023 and 2024, staff will update the master plan to preserve the original vision. This will ensure our parkland use remains consistent with our own mission and the park's purpose. And finally, we'll also work with the city of Izziquah to ensure our own land classifications at Lake Sam are consistent with the city of Izziquah's comprehensive plan, which will be updated in 2024. And now I'd like to hand it off to Lauren to tell us more about her new Miller Peninsula project.
Thank you, Michael. In November of 2019, the commission selected Miller Peninsula State Park property for development of a full-service state park. Last biennium, we received capital funds to complete the pre-design of the park. The camp planning process was paused in 2021 due to staffing issues and the need to complete an EIS. Planning accomplishments prior to 2022 included wetland reconnaissance, a visioning report, preliminary concept design, multiple reconnaissance, environmental reconnaissance, and a shelving document that summarized the work to date. We received funding for this biennium to complete the master plan as well as move forward with the environmental impact statement. Additional tribal coordination and widespread public outreach will begin in November to bring into alignment the current public input and with previously drafted alternatives and the preliminary recommendation. Staff plans to complete the camp, the master plan, and the EIS and the park naming by June of 2025. Next slide. So this is a screenshot, snapshot of our proposed planning timeline for this park planning process. The planning timeline is an ideal timeline, but it does have a six-month built-in buffer, which would afford us some flexibility in meeting these tasks. The most significant accomplishment for this year will be, again, an onboarding of an EIS consultant and starting the public scoping period. Through our continued effort of public engagement, we will work towards developing options for the name of the park and drafting the camp and master plan documents by 2025. Our consult will staff start drafting the EIS this, the first three quarters of next year. And at the same time, our design consultant will be working to finalize the pre-design for the park. With the built-in flexibility of the six-month buffer, we hope to come back to the commission between December 2024 and 2025, June 2025, for requested action and adoption of these plans. And now I will turn it over to Alex for update on Blake Island.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Alexandra Sullivan, and I will be discussing the Tilikum Village planning effort with you. So for a little background, Tilikum Village is located So for a little background, Tilikum Village is located on Blake Island on Puget Sound between Seattle and Kitsap Peninsula. Tilikum Village was run as a concession beginning in the early nineteen sixties and provided Native American programming. The business was sold to Argosy in two thousand and nine, and Argosy left the concession agreement in twenty twenty-one due to both the pandemic and poor condition of facilities. In twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, there was some effort made to begin looking for a new concession for the site, but that project was put on hold. So our scope for this project is to determine appropriate use for Tilikum Village facilities and public access for Blake Island. We see this planning effort process as a two-pronged approach. Firstly, we intend to explore partnership opportunities for potential Native American programming of some kind with the tribes. Staff believe we have an opportunity to provide authentic cultural programming. This could be a concession or some other form of partnership or interpretive program. However, we will explore all our options if authentic programming is not possible. Secondly, since the facilities are in poor condition, we need a fuller understanding of their condition and costs associated with repairs to determine if we should keep the current facilities or consider rebuilding. We also need to consider that Blake Island is only accessible by private boat currently. Having some form of transport available for the average park visitor would be ideal, and we hope to find a way to allow access, perhaps through some form of ferry service. The Marina project that was requested in the twenty-three twenty-five budget was not funded. So our ability to provide transportation to the island on a commercial scale is limited by the unclear funding timeline on that project. Next, next slide, please. So here's a map of the island as well as the Tilikum Village site and associated buildings. The stars that you see on the map represent the facilities associated with Tilikum Village. The remaining buildings are structures associated with park operations. So Tilikum Village includes the main concession building or longhouse, and there are additions that were made to that building over time to allow for laundry and storage. There's also two storage buildings and five concessionaire cabins. And then there was also commercial vessel marina space that was a part of this concession area. The facilities have a number of issues that need to be addressed before a new use could be made for the buildings, and we hope to determine the extent of these issues in the coming months. Next slide, please. So our next steps will be a site visit being conducted in September to get a better idea of the facility conditions and understand what options are truly on the table as we explore alternatives, including rehabbing the buildings, removing existing buildings, and either building something new at the site or not. We also hope to begin consultation with the tribes from the very beginning. This way, the tribes are able to co-create a vision with us through this process if they are interested in cultural programming at the site and a timeline that works for both parties and develops in an organic way. We intend to report back on the takeaways from the site visit to the executive leadership team in October to get further feedback and direction. Okay, and now I'm going to pass it back to Michael to talk about Fort Flagler.
Thanks, Alex. So in twenty twenty-two, staff began initial planning for the World War II buildings at Fort Flagler. We intended at the time to explore a range of options from full restoration to removal of some or all of the buildings. And at that time, the focus was on the building's adaptive reuse as a retreat center. During COVID, however, the buildings were determined to be in poor condition and as a result closed to the public. So in twenty twenty-three, our executive leadership looked more closely at this project and asked staff to first consider the bigger picture before moving forward. As a result, our historic preservation team from our stewardship division was asked to first review the historic significance of all of our World War II buildings statewide, which primarily centers on two locations, Fort Flagler and Fort Warden. As soon as this initial work is completed in fall or early winter, our planning effort to identify preservation strategies at Fort Flagler will begin. So we're hoping for a result from all of this work by twenty twenty-four. And now pass it off to Jen, who can talk more about Glintana.
Yeah, I will be concluding our presentation today talking about a new project. We are initiating a camp update for Riverside State Park with the purpose of including a piece of property known as Glintana. Many of you toured this property and therefore probably understand what a unique opportunity it is. This update supports efforts to acquire over a thousand acres of undeveloped riparian and upland habitat adjacent to one of our largest state parks in a near urban and high-demand area just outside the city limits of Spokane. It also presents an opportunity to foster a strong partnership with the Spokane Tribe of Indians and the Inland Northwest Land Conservancy. The camp update is in order to adjust the long-term park boundary and land classification to include the Glintana property. This step is essential to make it eligible for grant funding, future acquisition, and management. Work on this project is already underway and is planned to conclude late next year in order to best align with the Recreation and Conservation Office's grant timeline. Next slide. So this project presents a special opportunity to formally partner through a memorandum of understanding with the Spokane Tribe of Indians and the Inland Northwest Land Conservancy that MOU advances common goals to fund, acquire, and manage a large, large tract of land undeveloped along the little Spokane River. As you can hopefully make out on this map here, acquisition of Glintana would close a gap by connecting a long section of riparian habitat in Eplin Forest, not only with the rest of Riverside State Park, but also with adjacent land managed and owned by the State Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Inland Northwest Land Conservancy. It's also adjacent to a property owned by the Kalispel Tribe of Indians where they run a golf course. Next slide. So this slide lists the four stages of the camp process that we will be undertaking to include Glintana. The first stage focuses on gathering the hopes and concerns related to the project from our stakeholders, our partners, tribes, and the public. We then take this information to develop a set of alternatives. In stage two, through a variety of outreach methods and opportunities, we seek input on the alternatives, distilling that information into a preliminary set of recommendations, all that reflect those previous two stages. In stage three, it allows for additional conversation and vetting of the preliminary recommendation. And based on feedback, final adjustments will be made to develop a final recommendation on the long-term park boundary and land classification. Stage four consists of presenting the final recommendation to all of you for formal adoption and consideration by late summer of twenty twenty-four. Throughout the whole process, we will actively seek input and feedback from our partners, tribes, stakeholders, and the public through direct outreach and in-person and virtual workshops. In addition, I intend to provide updates to the commission's real estate committee and in-commission work sessions as the project moves forward. So with that, that was a lot of projects, but we are now, hopefully have some time in the agenda that we can answer any questions that you may have completely presented today. Looks like Mark, you have a question?
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Nikki. This question is for Michael. And I apologize because the screen view that I have doesn't show the page. Oh, let's see. Could you go back to slide twenty-seven, please? My question, Michael, your presentation on Fort Flagler was pretty high-level and pretty brief, and frankly, it left me not really understanding what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. So just a little more detail, get into the weeds just a little bit more, please. And then also the second bullet on this slide, I don't know what that means, is the US military preserving any complexes? Not, I'm not understanding the context of that, of that item. So a little more detail, please.
Okay. In, in general, the, the bullets that you see here are really the kinds of questions that need to be asked now. And for us to more, just to understand our own assets better, the World War II buildings. So the first bullet, we're really asking the question, are there other temporary World War II buildings in the state or locally? And then also looking nationally, are there other, are there other places where temporary World War II buildings exist? We really don't know that well. And so that, that will help us understand how important, relatively important, these buildings are. And that in turn helps us understand if they're significant enough for us to retain. So the question about military is sometimes the military will retain these kinds of buildings, but it's not something that's reported on. So we have to do some more research to find out, do they actually exist elsewhere? Are they unique is the question. The military may, may still have these, or they may have just gotten rid of all of them. Initially, the buildings really were intended to only last a decade, and then the idea was to tear them down, but they weren't. So those are sort of the contextual kind of issues. And then that third bullet again is like, where does our collection of historic World War II buildings, how does it compare? We may have the best collection of World War II buildings or, or it may not be. And then so fitting the World War II buildings into our mission, obviously, they fit our mission. But to what degree are they historically significant? If they are not historically significant, for example, it, we, we would have flexibility to, to either, you know, restore some of the buildings and remove others, or maybe we would choose to retain all of them depending on, you know, just how we want to move forward with retreat centers in general. So there's just a lot of context like that that we really want to understand before we dive into what are we going to do with the buildings? How will we treat them? What historic preservation strategy will we take? The future of these buildings are, you know, we could keep the facades of the buildings. They could be unoccupied, but we all know that when buildings are unoccupied, they're much harder to take care of. They were used by our agency very successfully as retreat centers, so we know that it's likely we would want to completely remodel likely the interiors if we chose to move forward with a new retreat center concept. So that kind of gives you, hopefully, Commissioner Brown, a better sense of the context.
It, it does. And if I may, just one quick follow-up, Michael, back on slide seven. This, the display on the computer screen that I'm looking at is pretty darn small, but do I understand with Fort Flagler looking at that, then basically it looks like you're going to start this effort this fall and hopefully be complete by December thirty-one of twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's starting with the stewardship division. So that's Alex McMurray and David Hanson, doing a lot of research about the context and, and trying to figure out, you know, the, where are these World War II buildings? Where is their place in our, in our collection of historic buildings? That may take us into winter, and so beginning some probably likely in winter. I think we can do the planning for the World War II buildings at Fort Flagler within twenty twenty-four. I don't see it extending beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good morning. Apologies, I appear to have lost my internet connection at some point during the Glintana presentation, so I am back now. I was actually going to just jump in, Ken, unless you were going to actually address the same. I actually, were you, did you have questions about Fort Flagler? I was going to say before we took that down, I just had a quick follow-up on that.
No, go ahead. Yeah.
Um, so in terms of the, you, you, like, so this might have been answered because you were speaking when I jumped back on. So we're looking at the military buildings. The slide said nationally. Is it relevant whether or not they're significant to Washington State?
Yes, it's very relevant. To determine how they fit nationally, regionally, or within the state or local, that'll help us understand how important the buildings are to us. If the buildings are historically significant, that means that there aren't very many buildings like the ones in our collection anywhere else. So that would, I think, imply that we would want to take a really close look at preserving many of them or all of them. And if they're only locally significant, what that really is telling us is that there's probably a bunch of World War II buildings like this nationally and within our state, actually. So we just have to figure that out so that we would in turn make better decisions about the investments into those buildings.
Thank you. Commissioner Bounds.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to take us back to slide five. Just a quick, a couple of quick questions about that. One is the talking about planning for climate change. My understanding is we are doing that right now. I know we've had a lot of conversations about some of the projects that we've been planning for out on the, on the coast and other places that are clearly impacted by climate change and rising oceans. So is that, I mean, is that a specific work product that we're?
Well, we, we are working on this now. Our, our Climate and Sustainability Coordinator, Ryan Carlson, is doing some, some work to, to this effect, but we haven't integrated that work yet into our planning efforts for parks in general. So as we are doing camps, for example, at a park, how do we consider climate change there? And also, we've got, we've got a lot of work statewide for climate change in either adapting or removing facilities. And how do we prioritize that? And, and what do we do first? So those are questions that haven't yet been answered.
It seems like the first part of that, Nikki, that we've we are doing, I at least I hope we're doing, considering climate change with projects that are, we're planning currently and projects we're building currently.
Not in a systematic way. We, we, it's something that we think about, but we haven't. I, I'm unaware of a camp where we may specific recommendations relating to climate change yet.
Interesting. I mean, I kind of get the second part of that where, you know, trying to do, doing some analysis to decide where the priorities are with respect to the, the greatest impact or least impact, I guess. And establishing priorities within the context of the capital budget to, to address that, but it seems like project by project, if we're not considering those issues, we seem like we should be.
Agreed.
I, I could just add a little bit to that in terms of our development projects, all of our development projects consider climate change if it's relevant. So if it's a marine project, for example, we're thinking about sea level rise. We've been thinking about that for five years. So it's the difference between what we're saying here today and, and so I want to reassure you that we consider climate change with our projects, especially our development projects, but we want to have a coherent, thoughtful program where we build into our long-range planning everything we know about climate change and, and just ensure that our future plans are very thorough and make recommendations. So for example, long-range plans might be, we know certain areas that are extremely vulnerable. We may need to move a boat launch, or maybe we'll need to just consider maybe a boat launch can no longer be at this particular location. Or do we need these certain buildings or not? Do we, you know, we're going to lose a number of buildings likely even at a place like Tuono. Will there be an awful lot of sea level rise impact on our, on our park? So we have to ask questions about, well, what are we going to do with those buildings in the future? And so we're trying to just build that into our camp planning process just so it's thoughtful.
Can I see, Dan, yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in for just a second here. Ken, I would like Lisa, since climate change is fully under stewardship and I, I know that we're obviously working together here, but Lisa, if you have anything to add to the conversation about the planning process and our sustainability, I'd like to give you the floor for a moment.
Certainly, I did just want to follow up. We, we certainly are already, to build on Commissioner Bounce's concerns, we are already factoring some of those things into a lot of our site-specific planning, but it is sort of the more comprehensive plan on how we're going to go about some of these things. Right now, they come up as we're doing a project. For example, we're doing a extensive replanning effort at Saltwater State Park, where we're very much taking into consideration climate adaptation into the design of that project. But we haven't done a more comprehensive look on how we apply the information that we have now into the future of the park system. So looking at, do we need to be doing some strategic acquisitions on properties? on properties that are at a higher elevation? For example, we haven't looked at, okay, what do we need? What are the services that we need to be continuing to offer the public? And how it, what is going to be our strategy for doing that? So we're absolutely using the information that we have presently. But there there are some additional planning efforts that will be needed to come up with that more cohesive plan moving forward.
Great, thanks. I think that's, I think maybe it's just the way it's displayed on the page that leaves all that detail out, which it has to. So I understand that. So I have a question about Blake Island. We've got the planning going on in twenty three, twenty five around Tillican Village. Do we have a camp for Blake? And is it just Tillican Village that we're focusing on? Are we looking at the whole state park?
We do have a camp for Blake Island. It was done as part of a a bigger camp project with a lot of the central Kitsap area parks.
You remember when that was, Nikki?
So this is just off the top of my head, two thousand nine or so, two thousand, yeah.
You're correct, Nikki, I think it was oh eight or oh nine.
Yeah.
Is it something we should update? Or are we just going to focus on?
Well, it it would depend upon whether the whether we determine that we should do something significantly different with the park than has been and whether that would necessitate a line classification change.
And we decide that by this process?
Yes, through the process that Alex is leading.
Okay, so it'll go beyond just what do we do with the buildings and looking at least conceptually at the whole park and whether there's a way to make it more accessible to the people that live around and what kind of amenities you might have in that park that would be valuable and accessible or or not. You know, maybe the way it is right now is just fine.
Yeah.
So I'm going to note, if I had been online when the Q and A started, I would have note that we, at the time, the time that I dropped, we had less than ten minutes for Q and A. So I'm not quite sure what time we started, but we are now five minutes over time. I think as long as all the commissioners are fine, nobody has a hard stop at the end of this meeting. We can run a little bit over just just to be aware that this could cause us to run till twelve thirty or one, depending on how long we go. We have at least three more questions. So and then I've got one question. So we've got four more, which might be ten more minutes at least, which would put us about fifteen minutes behind schedule. Sorry.
So I'm I'm sorry, Commissioner. I I was just going to say that I also think the next two presentations I'm involved in might not take their full time.
Okay, I was going to ask you that also. Had I been online, I was going to say, okay, we're over time. Are we gonna do, they will make some up? Okay, so we have a bit more time for Q and A. Again, recognizing we're five minutes over. So, you know, if we can Q and A it a little bit, although this was such a rich discussion with so many aspects that I also didn't want to cut it off. But again, just cognizant of the time. Thank you. I have Commissioner Williams next.
Thank you, Commissioner Danenberg. I just, first of all, wanted to acknowledge that Commissioners Brown and Rod were able to join us soon after the meeting started, for the record. So back to sort of grant prioritization, realizing that many grants have different criteria. To what extent does safety, issues of safety and sort of the urgency of perhaps having to close assets due to safety issues? To what extent is that part of our prioritization process?
So we are coordinating the grant planning process very closely with all of the capital projects. And what we do is we we talk with such a wide variety of staff and capital staff too, along with operations staff, to determine, you know, what are the widest spectrum of projects? That includes health and safety, new projects, you know, inspired projects, ones that came out of the blue. But then there's the practical ones. And what we have, the pattern over time, has been that grants in general are really going to be projects that are new projects for us. We do, we do health and safety projects sometimes. But in general, they're new things. There's an intersection, though, sometimes, like, maybe it's a bridge over railroad tracks or something like that, that that could be a grant, a trail grant. And that, you know, has health and safety issues connected to it. But in general, if there's something like a, I don't know, a broken sewer system or, you know, just health issues like that or safety issues around, like, I don't know, just say sidewalks are, you know, uprooted with tree roots and things like that. Well, those don't make very good grants. They're not very competitive. Sometimes they are, but in general, they're not. So with grants, we have to talk about the widest spectrum of projects so that we can just understand and sort out, okay, we know, we know, we can write these grants. They'll be competitive. And these other projects that we've identified are likely to be in the capital request instead.
Okay, so do we have? I guess my concern is, is that statewide, we have many what we call maintenance needs. But the reality is, some of these are to the point where if we don't do something, that asset, be it a trail, a dock, whatever, will be out. We will, at some point, we have to say, we got to take it out of service. And and we, that's a place, you know, those are judgment calls, management calls. But, you know, sort of with some new legal emphasis on, you know, what our liabilities are. You know, I feel like we, some of these, we just can't ignore. And I'm not quite sure what our process is, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out. And that might be a question for Diane, I don't know.
Yeah. So one of the, one of the problems is that most of the grant programs that we apply for through the Recreation and Conservation Office don't actually allow maintenance projects.
Right, I understand. I'm not really at this point talking about the grant process, but more overall capital planning for sort of renewal.
I guess I would just answer that by saying we're we're associated with that process, but we're not leading it. And so that would be best discussed by the capital team. And so maybe that would be, you know, upcoming commission meeting. But definitely would want to bring in the right people to discuss that.
Fair enough.
I I'm I'm going to jump in here for a moment. And Mike, I see that you had your hand up, and I'm assuming it was to partially address Commissioner Williams' question. So I'll go ahead and hand it off to you. And then if if there's anything I'd like to add, I'll add on to it. But please, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty high, high level, I think, just that, yeah, there are processes there to to be looking at the health and safety and, as you said, assets that might be on their last leg. And those are just happening, as Michael's pointing out, in in a couple of different programs, just with maintenance at the park and what Ryan Layton does and with the capital program. Sometimes you have had the capital budget brought to you with categorically, with health and safety being a category in it. Other times, it's just woven in. So there is consideration, though.
I guess, and I know we don't have a lot of time, but I guess as we look at things like Fort Flagler, Blake Island, you know, we're we're dealing with things where we were not able ten years ago, and of course, think ten years ago, we had a recession, to take care of issues proactively. And hopefully now we can move in that direction.
Yes.
And I'll stop.
Dr. Dupree, did you have anything more to add or should, can we go on?
No, I I think in just the interest of time. But Commissioner Williams, I'm happy to talk more about that offline, if you'd like.
All right, Commissioner Connolly.
Yeah, I think I just had another question, another follow up question on Blake Island. And if I understand it, I mean, in looking at the process, if if after the work done in this biennium, as far as what we're going to do with Lake Island, if it's consistent with the current camp, then it goes into a process of more like the if it involves capital or if it involved another concessionaire, that's a different process. But if, in fact, the analysis is that it's not consistent, so then it would be another one that would come back as a redoing the camp in order to move forward with the with Lake Island?
Okay, go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, if the camp doesn't need to be updated because we would be working within the same footprint of existing buildings, then I don't think it would come back as a camp request. We would bring it back to the commission if we made a decision going forward. And then it would enter the capital program if we were going to begin doing some rehabilitation efforts or considering rebuilding, of course.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Commissioner Rod?
I think you're muted. Sorry, thanks. Good morning. The first question I have is about the climate change and how we're looking at each park with the climate change. I just, I'm just wondering, have we looked at other states, what they were doing? And so we don't have to invent a wheel? I know there is something reasonable, like Tuono Park. I know the sea, water lover can ride and understand some basic things. But did any other state where creative doing something a little bit more than we do? When I was at Ecology, we look at the other state. Some of the most progressive states, progressive states are Massachusetts. But I'm just wondering if you have done anything like this? This is my first question. My second thought is concerning the historic building. Being worked with the political department, I think there are buildings at the National Register where it has significance to be kept for historic events, like, for example, Centraria Armory, Truman spent overnight during World War Two in it. They kept it. Now, Olympia Armory, they are using it for public, public services and other things. So was was Fort Flagler or Fort Borden? I think there is a national register for these buildings. If they fall in it, then we need to preserve it. If doesn't, then it is a judgment call about the structural ability and what we, can we keep it? Make it retro or not, that's another story. That's what I.
Could I answer that just quickly? I'll address the Fort Flagler. When the National Register nomination was written in the early nineteen seventies, it it didn't include the World War Two buildings. What it included were the buildings from the nineteenth century and and buildings associated with World War One. And so those buildings were historically significant nationally. And so that was the pathway that we took. And over time, the World War Two buildings reached fifty years age. And now what we're trying to do with Alex McMurray's work and David Hanson is is determine, should those World War Two buildings actually be added to the National Register nomination? And would they be historically significant in the same way that the World War One buildings, Endicott buildings, were? So anyway, that it it's a question that we are going to answer.
Okay, thank you.
I can go ahead and chime in. I was going to say, I can go ahead and chime in about the our work with other states related to climate change. And and yes, we are. Most specifically, we've been working with California State Parks. They have been, they're a little bit farther ahead of, ahead of this, but more regional in terms of their approach. So we have definitely been reaching out to other states, particularly other state park systems, to see how they may be addressing some of these issues. So so we definitely have. Also, just chiming in a little bit on the historic preservation issue as well. We're certainly looking at, I I think one thing we need to understand with some of these World War Two buildings is we're looking at the context. And that includes, you know, so we have this assemblage of buildings. Is it unique? What condition are they in? What is the integrity of the of the buildings? Because they might still be there, but they might have been altered to the extent that they've lost their integrity and are are no longer relevant. How is it? Like, we have places where some of the buildings have been removed and some of them are still there. How does that influence the integrity of the assemblage of buildings on site? And so we're looking at that. And we're looking at other sites, particularly on the West Coast, such as JBLM and the Presidio down in California, to see, do they have a, do they have similar assemblages of buildings? Do they have greater integrity than ours do? So we really want to set that context before making decisions. And so that will all be part of the equation in the planning process as well.
Thank you.
Let's see, I had only one, couple of quick questions that haven't already been answered, to try to go at the end in case someone else already has them. Just quickly, Nikki, so for for the, when you say that the projects have not been assigned, very briefly, like, what are the different ways in which they get assigned? So what is that process?
Well, so some of the projects that that we're working on this biennium were ones that were already underway. So they were assigned by previous partnerships and planning manager to previous planners, and we are finishing that work. But the recent process is that the planning program has proposed what projects that we will work on and has created a presentation much like the one that you're seeing here, but perhaps with a little more detail, and has shared that with our executive leadership team and received the go ahead from the leadership team to proceed with with the plan. So that's how they get assigned.
I see. Okay, so we're looking at an ELT. That's where, because I I know that there was, Commissioner Bounce also had a question just about the not yet assigned. And then I, you know, in terms of the historic preservation, you know, I think at some point I had asked John Snyder, for example, about, you know, looking at our buildings for outdoors for all or some of the, you know, the education programs. And I know that if it, you know, if it's historically significant, depending on designation, that either can limit what we can do or or not. Like, so there there seems like there's different aspects. So if it is considered historic, it might be eligible for other funding, things like that. But also, there might be restrictions on how we can actually remodel or change the structure, correct? So I'm trying to think, like, in terms of this sort of decide, if it is historically significant, would there be sort of limitations to our ability to use it? Does that make sense?
I can address that.
Yeah.
The National Register, being being historically significant means that we want to follow the Secretary of Interior standards, which are basically federal rules on how you can maintain or preserve historic buildings. That's actually administered through the National Park Service. And we have been doing that for decades now in our agency. And I can tell you that with all of our buildings, the the Secretary of Interior standards are very flexible. They allow us to preserve buildings in different ways. So preservation could be very strict interpretation of that, like every nail, every piece of wood, everything that represented that historic building, we preserve. Other ways that you can preserve a building is you can replace historic fabric with fabric that's in kind. And you have flexibility to also use different materials to meet contemporary needs. So maybe it's an ADA need. We can alter historic buildings in order to do that. Or perhaps, like in the case of the World War Two buildings, if we chose to use them as retreat center buildings in the future, we would be, we'd have the flexibility to preserve the buildings as well as redo the interiors so that they are modern retreat center experiences for people. So Secretary of Interior standards are very flexible, but we have to choose, you know, and then defend why we're going a certain pathway. But we can definitely do that. And I was talking to, I was talking to Alex McMurray about this just last week. And he emphasizes that there really is no, like, other route for money for historic buildings. There are no, like, grants that are federal grants that, there's sometimes tax relief with different projects that include historic buildings, but really a dearth of separate money for maintaining historic buildings, unfortunately.
Interesting. Yeah, I mean, and again, I would, we probably were sort of way over time. But I know, you know, in terms of looking at these historic buildings, if we were to actually use them, they are very leaky. And so if we suddenly needed to eat them or put children in them overnight, like, whatever our climate change goals would be, it would be, it could go out of the window unless we really change the interior. So.
Yes.
And Dan, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, just one note on that. Thank you, Commissioner Danenberg. We are looking at this sort of holistically now because meeting our climate goals, of course, has, is a whole nother level of consideration that we need to take in with these buildings. And so instead of And so instead of, I think our past approach to this has been sort of looking at each building in and of itself. And what are we going to do with this thing? Or maybe this one conglomerate of buildings? And what are we going to do with this thing? We're looking at all of our buildings in that context. And hence the, the list that Michael had in his presentation about what is the national significance of this? What is our statewide significant is this? It's really taking a much more larger space in our decision making because we have these other pressures that we are trying to address. We only have so much money. We have ADA accessibility. We have health and safety issues. We have climate, climate issues that we're, we need to address. And so nothing ever gets easier, right? It only gets a little more challenging. The outdoor schools for, school for all will also have an impact on this. And while there isn't necessarily funding for historic buildings, there's, there is the potential for funding and Owen will probably get more information from this later down the line. But there's potentially more funding for facilities for outdoor school for all. So it's always the sort of ever evolving matrix of how we're going to address something. And it's kind of trying to throw a bumblebee at a puppy some days.
Thank you. We have seen the bumblebee puppy photos. They tend to eat them. It doesn't go well for them. Thank you so much. So now we are way over time. So if there are no further questions, again, I, I think that was a really fantastic presentation. I loved bringing in all of the planners to be able to sort of talk about and answer questions about their, their projects. And so again, I, I really commend you for a really excellent presentation now that we've taken all of your time for your next two items. We are continuing on with our real estate and planning program manager. And I think this time she's joined at least by your Eastern Region Manager, Scott Griffith.
Yes, thank you. So let me pull up this presentation. This item is to talk about the potential for a new, the lease of a new state park at a place called Scootney Recreation Area or Scootney Reservoir Recreation Area. We'll start first by talking a little bit about the Bureau of Reclamation who own this park. And then we'll give you a description of Scootney Park and talk about some of the potential benefits to state park of us leasing Scootney. Talk about some of this operational needs and the lease options that we have. So just to let you know where we are in the state, Scootney is in Southeast Washington in Franklin County. And we were approached by the Bureau of Reclamation about whether we would like to lease this park from them and manage it. The Bureau of Reclamation is probably not a super well-known or understood federal agency. It was established in 1902 in order to promote the development of the Western United States through water projects like dams, power plants and canals. And they're the largest wholesaler of water in the country with one of five Western farmers receiving their water from BOR projects. And they're also the second largest producer of hydroelectric power in the US. So all of that says that recreation isn't really their, their thing. And in fact, they don't have statutory authority to manage recreation sites themselves. But with partnerships, they manage about 250 recreation sites throughout the country. And one of those partnerships that they have is with Washington State Parks. And we currently have agreements with the BOR on several of our parks where either all are part of, of these parks. Lake Easton, Concanoli, Steamboat Rock and Potholes. And this has been a good relationship with BOR. They're, they're good partners for us. And, and these obviously are, are popular parks. So I'm gonna let Scott talk some more about how this project came to us, this proposal came to us, and then give us some information about the park itself.
Good morning. Thanks, Nikki. And greetings from Onachi. Scott Griffith, the Region Manager of Southeast Washington. And in respect, Commissioner Danenberg, to our agenda, I will not tell BOR trivia. So no Bureau of Reclamation trivia, that's out the window. So anyway, that, that, I just wanna talk about how this came to our attention. The original slide when we first did this was to Scott not have anything better to do. It is how this came to us is the BOR was at Steamboat Rock State Park, their district manager, their resource manager, their cultural resource manager, their archaeologists, they were steamboat. Were doing mitigation on their property because of some cultural artifacts have been exposed. And they were talking to the area manager and we have, like Nikki said, we have a great relationship with the BOR. They're a great partner. They were during the cuts of 2002. They continue to be today. And the region manager turned to the area manager and said, we've got this sweet park called Scootney that I'd like you to consider. And he kinda laughed it and, but he brought it to my attention and it led to a first site visit, as you see in the fall of 2022. There's a lot when we, when we visit new parcels like this, there's a lot of elements that are deal killers. We, we've listed some, I, I think some that, I remember going with Peter Herzog and Mike Sternbeck to Crescent Bar. And we just were enticed to operate this facility and we're putting it under the filter of state parks. And one is, does it feel like a state park? Is it complimentary to our, what we offer? Is it provide the amenities that the public wants and expects? This has very state park feel. If you've been there, you would, you would potentially even think it was one by the gazebo's, the design of the bathrooms, design of the campsite. So it feels like a state park and has the amenities that our visitors would expect. So that was the first glance at this. Also too, we do want, do not want to inherit for our fine commission, any major issues. Many of those are underground. No underground issues here. They recently redid the sewer system. A multi, a million dollar project on the sewer system, the stormwater. The electrical system has been upgraded. So there's no major issues. We're not inheriting any failures on the, on the physical property. My other element when we go on site is we do not want to inherit controversies. We don't want to enter into a hostile animosity with the neighbors or the uses in there. There is not that here. And it's just a very complimentary recreational feature. So boat launch, piers at the campsites, ADA pathways and features and a great fishing and boating on the lake. So overall, we left pretty optimistic about this proposal and, and continuing our partnership with BOR. And then also I looked up who Scootney was. We don't want a strange name. Scootney was an engineer with the BOR. BOR typically names its properties after the chief engineer. So Scootney was a engineer years ago. Just a quick overview of the, the, the project boundary is a little under a thousand acres, but the developed is what you see here, which is our primary interest that we'll bring to the commission to assume this management agreement of the developed property. We'll go to the next slide. It'll feature a little more of the, what's going on in here. Two camp loops, pretty typical boat lodge, large boat lodge, parking, boat lodge. And there's a hand boat launch area, fishing piers, observation decks over the water and a nice day use area with a swim beach. So a pretty nice, compact suite of opportunities for the public. And then as you come in, there's administrative complex with a shop and an admin area. So that's the overview of the park. And let me go to the next slide. Just quickly, I'm not gonna read you this. It's what you saw is what you get. There's three bathrooms in there, picnic sites, office shop, 37 standard campsites. We'll talk about the potential of this property in a moment. And then just a really nice boat launch, half mile off State Route 17, if you know the area. And like I mentioned, a very good sewer system, ample irrigation from the reservoir and a good domestic water system. I should also mention this lake is a, it's, it's non, it doesn't fluctuate. It's a regulated lake. This is a water holding reservoir for the BOR. So it is highly regulated and it is a, it doesn't fluctuate. So the shoreline is a stable shoreline here. We can go to the next one, Nikki. And we go next. And so I'm just gonna give you some snapshots, just an overview of the park. Obviously there's hand crafts, a low bank here. People enjoy it and also great facilities for a motorized boat use. And go to the next one. I should know all the fish that are in there. I can find out for you. But what is nice, this is the observation pier, a fishing pier on the right, ADA accessible. And also on the left, you see those are docks for campers to bring their boats near the campsite. Go next slide. And just some representative shots of the campground. We can go to the next. And a nice ice fishing, too. It's so the, there's no restrictions. The Bureau puts on us as an agency on how we operate it or what hours we are. So we'd be in full control of what hours we would operate this facility. We go to the next one in terms of months of the year. Just more representative shots. And go one more here, Nikki. Yeah. And like, and I wanna talk about, this is the, there's also a thousand acres of undeveloped property. And this is a pretty representative snapshot, other boat launches out in the same project area and some primitive bathrooms there and ADA features. Our interests will be coming to the commission with the developed area. These undeveloped areas allow hunting. And we could navigate through that, but at this point, we're just coming with an up to, to lease a developed park property. And the BR, we continue to oversee these undeveloped areas. We could develop agreements with the BOR to do some surveillance of these areas. But when you, if you were to go there, you would see these undeveloped sites. There might be nice opportunities in the future for cabins that was brought up. We brought that up with the subcommittee when we met. But for now, we're looking at the developed area. We can go next slide. And just a snapshot of the past uses, like I said, there's hunting in there. They, they've operated with modest staff and they've operated about eight months out of the year. And Franklin County Parks did run this. Like Nikki said, the BOR, they're by statute, they could, they cannot operate parks. They will for, for stopgap measures, but we'll talk about the financial incentives for them to find partners. But that's, we, we also see the, you know, the tenants is pretty modest. When we add parks to our campsite reservation system, we see dramatic increases in use. I can think of Brooks Memorial is a great example. They boast to me and it's full many weekends, never the case. So when we add projects like this into our host of reservation, it does increase visitation and also just the programming that we do. You know, with interpreters and doing programming at parks and sponsoring events. So we see there's a lot of potential here. We go next, Nikki. Did you wanna cover this, Nikki?
Yeah, yeah, I can do this. So the next couple of slides are some of the benefits that Scootney could provide to state parks. First, it would increase our campground inventory, which is one of the commission's priorities. Franklin County is more than 50% Latina, so the park serves a diverse community. And the park is also in an underserved part of the state. We don't have many parks in Southeast Washington. And in fact, we closed some back in the early 2000s. So, so this area of the state is underserved by state parks. We have a positive working relationship with the Bureau of Reclamation. And they also have the ability to share costs with us, both on capital improvements and on operation. So that is a really great thing that could help us in our consideration of, of whether to take on a lease of Scootney. The park fits our state parks profile as Scott mentioned that it looks like a state park. It has accessible facilities for people with disabilities. It has day use and overnight facilities similar to how we would create a park. And the park would fit into the, in with the other parks in the Cooley Corridor Management Area. And the staff in that area are receptive to the idea of managing Scootney. We have done some work in looking into the, the property. The BOR has shared their engineered drawings and reports and operating manuals with us. Then we have looked at those. Our staff have done three site visits with staff from, from BOR. And we've also had staff from different divisions look at this possibility. The stewardship staff and archaeology staff have done more of a desk review, but the planning, maintenance, arbor crew and operations staff have all been out on site. We're thinking that in order to operate this park, that it could be done with about 1.75 FTEs. The park would also need some capital improvements, including a contact station and a campground restroom that has showers. And we would also need a staff residence. The park could also benefit from some other projects that could happen in the future, like additional camping or, or electrifying campsites or adding cabins. If we wanted to take on a lease for, for this property, we could think about it in relation to our current management agreement that we have for Concanoli Steamboat Potholes and a site called the O'Sullivan Site. We have a 25-year management agreement with them. It expires in 2031. But what we could do is renew that early so that we could keep all of these parks together and just renew them at the same time. So that decreases workload on these renewals. And we could add Scootney into that lease agreement. And also at the same time, remove the O'Sullivan Site, which is a property that is less suitable as a state park. And that's it. We're, we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Let's see, I see hands going up. Commissioner Bounds.
Thank you, Commissioner Danenberg. When we reviewed this at the Real Estate Committee, I think we were all pretty excited about it. And asked questions about whether it increased the capacity for camping in the state. And I think Scott's answer about getting it on the reservation system provides that. The other thought I had afterwards though, Scott, is whether, you know, whether this is, you know, we've, we've talked about expanding camping statewide and, and we've had that on our strategic, I think, priorities is looking at how we could do that. You know, we've been thinking about some of our, our state parks that possibly could squeeze more campsites in or not. But I don't think we ever really talked about BOR. And obviously they've got some way to build parks that look like state parks. I assume that's through their licensing agreements and mitigation. I don't, I don't know. But it might be worth, and we may have done this already, and looking at where else do they own property that is strategically located, that would be a benefit to Washington State campers that we might want to see proactively if whether we wanna partner with them. It's kind of a long-term vision, whether we wanna partner with them. And if they do have access to development money, which it seems like they, they may, then they could perhaps build some sites out and we could lease them and operate them for the benefit of the, for the state. So just a thought, and I, I really don't know where they own property. I assume all along the rivers, like some of the other utilities do. And that might be a nice way to, to move forward.
The other interesting thing, since they operate reservoirs and holding facilities, some of their parcels like this are way off the river. Since they're getting irrigation water throughout Eastern Washington. So, but I'm smiling on behalf of, I don't know who's watching the meeting, but if the BOR representatives are out there, they've got a big smile on their face, Commissioner Bounds. Okay. And if this goes to the full commission, I think they would be glad to join you and, and have that discussion. Definitely. And like Nikki said, they're a great partner. And, and the cost shares are upwards of 50% of even paying for our staff at these facilities. So it's a lot of enticement to work with them. So, yeah, I, I can definitely chat with them. And if it just moves forward, have BOR available at the meeting as well to have those discussions. They have lots of parcels in Eastern Washington. I just can't speak off the top here if they're undeveloped. Or, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. I, I see Commissioner Rod's hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner. One thing I really would like to, and the list we need to do is a park ranger residence. To me, this is really a priority. This is to me like the engine. If we cannot have residency for the park ranger, our, our recruitment will be difficult to, to be achieved in that regard. So I would like to make it bold and highlight it, residents for the park ranger. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bounce got BOR smiling, now you have me smiling. So thank you. On behalf of all the park ragers, we totally agree with you. The, the beauty of this commissioner is that they had a, they have a spot for a double wide trailer. They just removed it. So the infrastructure is there to readily add a residence. And we've said that's a, that's a must do, like you, I'm glad you know that. It's must from surveil, it's also what we provide. We provide the public a little higher level of security by having staff there. So the space is there, I won't show you a spot, a picture of it, has a, has service for sewer, water and electricity right next to the shop as you go in, and, and we have made that a priority. So thank you for.
Thank you.
Yes, it is bolded.
Okay.
And I might just ask, I also have a question. I might ask this, anyone else? I see Commissioner Williams, we're way over time, just so we can adjust time. Can everybody who wants a question, we'll, we'll close it out now. Give you 10 seconds, anyone else, I'll have a question. Otherwise it'll be Commissioner Williams, me, otherwise we're, we're quite a bit over time and we're not making it. That's so. All right, Commissioner Williams.
Um, I, I just wanted to note that this week there was an article in the Washington Post about what an important agricultural area this is. So the growth in the area would also indicate that having a park here is to our benefit. And just want to be clear that as we talk about the additions that we would want to make to the park, are there any barriers that you would see that would keep us from doing that?
No, that's a great question. We, we, they did, they're not. And that was one of my deal colors as well. The cultural sensitivity here, they've done, they've done section 110 cultural surveys as part of their development. So I do not see those from, from cultural resource point of view or from, from an infrastructure point of view. Enough water, enough sewer. We've, we've done analysis of the water and sewer system as well too. And then again, any local politics that would prohibit that or get in the way of that, no. Thank you. I did want to, if I'm signing off, thank you for letting me join you. I did encourage the subcommittee that another beauty of this place is the Crane Festival. The Sand Hill, Sand Hill Crane Festival is a big event in this corridor and it's March 22nd, 23rd and 24th next year. So if you want to see this park in its glory, come see the cranes flying through, it's a spectacular thing. So, thank you.
We're not quite closing off, sorry. I always hold my questions until after all the other commissioners ask. So FY for staff, I will, I usually have questions and I'm not raising my hand because I'm not going to call on myself. But I'm usually waiting just to let everybody else ask their questions first for time. So a couple of questions on this one that haven't been addressed. I did have a question about the staffing. If it's not quick, maybe this is just something to consider. You had mentioned the, the one, I, I would say I generally, I, you know, I love that we are increasing camping. I know that that's a really big priority for the state ledge. They've always, you know, they ask us like, is there camping, is there camping? So increasing camping access. So it does look like, is this the one, the 1.75, is that additional staff? And is, are we, would we be going to the ledge to ask for the funding for that as well as capital in order to make the improvements? That's one question. The second question is around equity, just so that you can figure out the timing of it. You had mentioned controversy in this area. I don't actually know what the BOR access requirements are. So I know that this can go either way. There are complaints about the cost of our camping. I don't know what that walk-in camping currently costs versus what would it cost if we were managing it. But are we looking at the, the sort of equity of possibly, and then also that, you know, you had mentioned the fishing and the hunting, needing to manage that from a staffing perspective. Do we see any controversy coming from our management of it? Because our restrictions versus BOR sort of managing and cost. So, sorry, I can re-ask the question if you need to. I just wanted to give you a sense of timing because they're two kind of big questions.
You know, and they're, they're great questions. Thank you. And Nikki, I'll field some of them. I'll, I've, I've heard several things. Yeah, I, I do, I never want to take on a park and put under new management and then have state parks be the subject of controversy. So it's never my desire. So the fishing and hunting, we would not interfere with any past uses or precedents around that. But we would allow it in the undeveloped areas and that to be continued. On the, on the equity issue and the dollars, the, the BR doesn't dictate what our, what we charge for the site. So there's a lot of latitude within that. I think, uh, the access, uh, as we develop, we'll be considering those things. And one of the things too, we, I've been intrigued by alternative ways of camping here, Yurts cabins to attract a more inclusive audience from the, to introduce people to camping perhaps. So I'm intrigued by that too. The other in terms of the, the staff, the, the 1.75 is an estimate. Again, we would determine the seasonality of the park, but I've looked at what BOR is used to manage the facility at this point. And in terms of the funding for the staff, you asked about, BOR can cost share. We could go to them for half of the cost of the shaft, of the staff. We're hoping that the revenue stream coming in from this park would supplement some of the funding for the other staff. That's the short of it. We would have to do a request for some additional staffing. Most of that is temp, temp summer jobs, park aids, senior park aids. But probably a park ranger one, we're thinking at this time onsite too. So I hope that answered them, Commissioner Danenberg, in a random order.
On the issue of, yeah, on the issue of whether, of, of camping costing more under state parks. There, the other thing to consider is that, as I mentioned, BOR doesn't have statutory authority to manage recreation sites. And so what they've told us is that eventually, if they can't find a partner for the site, it could be that they are required to actually remove the recreational facilities. And so, um, so it might not so much be a choice between cheaper camping and more expensive camping, but between camping and not camping eventually.
Thank you. And as you may have seen, my video, I dropped again. I'm going to try to turn off incoming video if there's a way to do it here. So sorry, I will have to watch the recording for the first half of your answer. I sort of came in while you were finishing, Scott. Any other questions before we move on to the next item? Apologies about my, I don't, I don't, I don't know what's going on with my internet today. All right. And I think we are still on you. If you want to launch the next item.
Yes. Okay, so our next item, Brian Patnott is here joining us as well. He is the Region Capital Manager for Eastern Region. And we're here to talk about a potential long-term boundary update for Paragon Lake State Park. Um, first I will go over an introduction to Paragon Lake and talk about the current long-term boundary and the proposed update. And then we'll go over next steps. Paragon Lake is in Okanagan County near the town of Winthrop. And it is 1,186 acres. It includes most of the lake shoreline. Um, it is popular for both summer and winter recreation. In the winter, there are fat tile tire bicycles, bicyclists who like to use the park. Paragon is a popular state park. In 2022, there were more than 330,000 visitors. And the park is an economic driver for the nearby town of Winthrop, which you see right over here. Um, and it is well-supported by the local community. The first parcels in the park were purchased in 1959, but most of the park was acquired in the early 2000s. And that's when we made a concerted effort to acquire property around the lake. The park's classification and management plan or camp was completed in 2006. The long-term park boundary includes all of the lake shoreline except for this area on the north end, where there's only a strip along the road. And zooming in on that area, the camp doesn't specify why, but boundaries along roads like this were usually intended as a visual buffer to ensure that as you travel into the park, you have kind of a parkway feel. Um, there are three shoreline properties here that were not included in the long-term boundary. This purple one is Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. It is a boat launch, is part of a larger fish and wildlife complex that includes this property across the road and then more property to the east. The orange property is owned by the Yaki family. And they also owned some of the other properties that we acquired around the lake in the early 2000s. And then the red property here is the Silverline Resort, which is a private campground. I've spoken with the planners who worked on this camp and with the former park manager. And we haven't found a definitive answer about why these properties weren't included in the, in the long-term boundary. But they had a general sense or, you know, vague memory that the owners of Silverline Resort, the former owners of Silverline Resort and the Yaki family at that time were not interested in being included in the long-term boundary. So that may be why these three parcels weren't included, but the rest of the lakefront was. But opinions like that change over time. And last year we were contacted by a real estate broker that was representing the, the former owners of the Silverline Resort, asking if we were interested in buying their property. And we couldn't act on it quickly enough and they sold it to a new owner who has it now. And then also just recently, the Yaki family also contacted us, asking whether we might be interested in purchasing, purchasing this property. So staff are looking at the possibility of a long-term boundary update to include the rest of the shoreline on Paragon Lake. And to give you a feel for the properties under consideration, I'll show you some photos, starting with the DFW boat launch on the east and working west towards Silverline. The WDFW property is a small gravel parking area that serves a boat launch here. It's used, of course, for launching boats, but also some folks use it as beach access to the lake. It includes a vault toilet. And then moving westward, this is the Yaki property on the south side of the road. You can see that WDFW boat launch here in the background with people playing on the beach. The Yaki property is about 24 acres with about nine of those being south of the road. And that's what we're looking at. Here as well, it's undeveloped and it gently slopes down toward the lake. North of the road on the Yaki property, you have more rolling topography. Then moving west, there is the Silverline Resort. As I said, it's a private campground. It includes utility campsites, tent campsites, group camping, a boat launch and swim beach and docks. And here is the edge of looking down into the Silverline Resort in the foreground. If you look through the trees here, that is the Yaki property. And then in the background, there's the WDFW boat launch and the state park is further out. Adding these properties to the long-term boundary would allow us to extend the current park trail, named after our former director, Rex Stur, all the way around the, the lake, creating about a four-mile loop. And people like loop trails, so that would be a, a good benefit to the park. And it would also allow us to pursue acquisition of the Yaki property, preventing it from being developed into home sites. The area is owned to allow one home per five acres. So you could have about four homes within this, this property. And adding these properties to the long-term boundary would allow us to act more quickly should the Silverline Resort ever become available again, which is a possibility. It would also allow us to talk with DFW about potential management agreements or about partnering with them on the Yaki property. For example, perhaps state parks could acquire the Waterford side and, and maybe DFW would want to manage the Upland side along with their property up there. Our next step is to consult with the Confederated Tribes of the Caldwell Reservation. A former formal consultation process isn't required for this action, but one would be if we were to pursue acquisition of the Yaki property. And we should communicate with them before we set out on a path. And then we will seek input from the public by reaching out and emailing. This will help us determine whether further public input is necessary. So far, what I've heard is that people would be supportive of, of this. And then depending upon what we hear from the first two, we could bring this for commission consideration as early as October, which would be a convenient time to do it because the meeting in October is in Winthrop. And that's it. Hopefully I made up some lost time on this presentation.
You have, but we might just take it right back. Let's see. I have turned off video, so if you could raise your virtual hand definitely for questions. And I'm going to say, when I turn off the video, Lisa, you look like you've got your hand up because there's like a, there's like a little virtual, any questions?
Looks like Brian might, might have wanted to add something.
Yes. And yes, did you want to add something, Brian? And I see Commissioner Bounce, you have your hand up as well.
Yeah, yeah. Good morning to the Commission Director at E L T. Thanks for having me here with, along with Nikki and Nikki, nice work on the presentation. I just wanted to add a couple of different, a couple more points. The first one is since 2005, we've added several hundred acres around the lake in 12 different acquisitions. So the, the, the dream here is to kind of preserve Paragon. A couple of other things, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Twist Works, but it's a hub for art and innovative small businesses and community projects in Twist. And in 2020, they commissioned a study, an economic study that found, you know, there's over 500 visitors to the Meha Valley each year and about 55 million in gross revenue. Paragon accounts for about 55,000 of those overnight visitors. And it's one of the more, one of the, the cheaper options to stay in the valley. And since that time, or since 2005, there've been over a thousand homes added to the area as well. And another key point that, that came out of that report was that 60% of the families in the Meha Valley make less than 60% or 60,000 a year and that poverty is increasing. So as we're looking toward this park, that's provides year-round opportunities as well as our capital plans, we're currently designing about 44 new campsites in the West Campground. This is just a great opportunity to complete the loop. I heard safety talked about earlier in the, in the meeting. And people want to make a loop and with these properties, we'd be able to complete the Rexster Trail. Currently people do make a loop, but it pushes them onto Bear Creek Road. It has narrow shoulders and poor sight lines. So that's another benefit. So I just wanted to kind of talk through a couple of those points. And that's it. So thanks for considering this a great opportunity.
And Commissioner Bounce.
Yeah, real quick, do we anticipate any opposition to this?
I haven't heard about any yet, but that is why we want to reach out to the public to learn whether or not there will be.
Okay, thank you.
I have heard that if, if we bring it to the October meeting, that there may be people that want to attend to support it.
So I guess I have a question related to that with the tribal consultation. That sounds very, very quick. Have we already done some sort of pre-consultation that we believe that we could finish it that quickly?
No. So yes, it is quick. So it'll, it'll depend upon what we hear from them, whether we're able to, to come back that quickly.
There are no other questions. We have made up the time. Congratulations. Um, I believe we have, yes, we have. Thank you so much. A fantastic, fantastic presentations this morning, Nikki. I, um, I'm sure my other fellow commissioners who I cannot see again, because I have a video off, would join me and just saying that very solid, you know, very, again, very impressive this morning. And looking forward to seeing this property, hopefully if we can, when we visit it in October.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we'd like to now move, only one minute behind schedule, to our financial update with Administrative Services Director Laura Holmes.
Great. That is an impressive catching up with the time. So good morning, everyone. Laura Holmes, Administrative Services Director. And although we're in the 2325 by N E M, this is not a typo. I will be providing an update on the 2123 progress as we are continuing to close our. as we are continuing to close our accounts and our books out. September 1st is our final cutoff, so in October, at that meeting, we will have a full and final 2123 update and report. And additionally, I will, in October, provide 2325 kind of setup for those slides. Currently, July and August, there's a lot of inputting of allotments and work that goes into adjustments and approvals through OFM. And then all of those reports go live through our system, and I will have that information available in October. So for today's report, we'll go over the capital and operating budgets as well as revenue collected for the 2123. At our last meeting in July, I had visitation data through April and had, just based on what I was seeing, projected we could hit 40 million for the fiscal year. So we are just moments away from finding out how right or maybe not that I was. So we'll take a look at that visitation data. And then because we do have revenue for the first month of our new biennium for July, I'll have a couple of slides that just provides an update on that. So looking at our capital and operating budgets, we have 163.7 million in our capital budget. This first two columns there represent our state building construction account and about 109.9 million. We have overall spent 40% of those funds. And then you can see breaking that out by new projects. We had 71.8 million that we've spent 31% of, and funds that for the reappropriations are projects that have crossed Biennium. We've spent 54% of those, that 38.1 million. Additionally, we have grants, donations, and pass-through funds, which are largely the RCO, the Recreation and Conservation Office, grants and a few of the Clean Vessel Act grants. So we've spent 36% of the funds available through that process. I do want to just pause for a moment and mention, if you compared this slide to the slide from the July presentation, what you will see is that those expenditure dollars are amount are down a little bit. And I just want to walk through the state process so you have awareness of kind of why there would be a difference in them being down. We did not reimburse our contractors or anything through this process. It is actually just the way that encumbrances work. And because of an encumbrance is basically an obligation of funds when we have a contract for a service. And so we don't want to double count that money, so we count it as an obligated expenditure. And those need to be liquidated or released or removed at the end of a biennium and then reset up for the new biennium. So because of that, they get drawn down a bit. It is all work that is still happening. The flow of work is not impacted, and those, you know, capital projects are still continuing. It's just a backend process that looks a little funky in the in-between, so wanted to make you aware of that. And then for our operating budget, we have 231.8 million in operating funds. We are getting very close on spending our general fund. We've got about 600,000 there, and I do anticipate we'll get that pretty close to zero. For our parks renewal and stewardship account, we have a balance of about 2.4 million. And I do expect to carry somewhere between 1.5 and 2 million forward into the next biennium. For our dedicated and other funds, that's boating and winter wreck, they have spent 79% of their funds. And of course, the boating program is on a federal fiscal year, so that also is just a little bit of adjusting for their last few months. Taking a look at revenue last biennium, we collected 141.7 million. Looking at our Discover Pass sales and the way that I break out this pie chart, 37% is, you know, our Discover Pass parking permits. The, if you look at the camping and roofed overnight combined as our overall, you know, overnight stays, it's actually very right in there with our Discover Pass sales at 38%. And overall, that gives us 75% between our overnight and our day-use parking pass that generate our revenue. Then there's 11% license renewal donations and 15% all other. We did collect 14 million more than we had projected. Our projections were conservative. We're also, you know, since the initial phase of the pandemic, it is also, you know, impacted us quite a bit in our visitation. And we're not sure when that might start to decrease or it might, you know, plateau. And so we're also trying to be very conservative, not sure where a biennium might kind of lead us, since then it's made it a little more challenging. But we do have the 14 million that we collected over. And sometimes I get the question, so what do we do with that 14 million? Does it go into savings for next biennium? Do we get to use it now? And that 14 million was really supporting our supplemental requests. So we did receive an additional 5 million for inflationary costs, 5 million for equipment, and 4 million for park maintenance. So we did spend it in real time during last biennium. Looking at our revenue trend. So this is comparing fiscal year to date, even though it's a full fiscal year. Since we haven't closed, I'm leaving the fiscal year to date in there. Discover Pass is 5% higher than last year. We're definitely seeing an increase there, even the last few months of last biennium in the Discover Pass sales. Camping is up, roofed is down just slightly, and donations down just slightly. But that's what we're seeing for the overall fiscal year. And then looking at visitation, so I did try to see if teams had anything like a drum roll. They have all these wonderful animated, you know, emojis, but no, no sound effects, which is actually probably good. So we did reach our 40 million. We actually had 41.1 million recreation visits. And I know it's a little bit challenging to see with this slide, but the purple line is representing last fiscal year, the green line, so fiscal year 23. And then the green line is the year before that, fiscal year 22, which is kind of what I was comparing to. And you can see it, it either was very close to or just under fiscal year 22 up until May and June, where we had a huge bump in the number of visitors that came into the park. So that landed us about a 1% increase over the previous year. I'm not quite sure, I was actually looking at reports for the month of May, just to see like in Seattle, what was it? And it looked like this year we had an average of, you know, 60 degrees and an inch less rain over last year that was 53 degrees and a little more rainy. So I don't know if maybe that early May, like, hey, it's great and sunny outside, just was inspiring. I also know our marketing team has been doing quite a bit of work in getting some things out there. And so I'm sure there's a combination, but it was very great to see the amount of use and just people getting outdoors. I did take a look this morning just to see, I was waiting for July to close and took a little sneak peek because it was there, and that is also looking very healthy. So overall, this summer seems to be one with a good visitation. So in summary, for the 2123 there, we have our, you know, financial services team working, you know, very, very busy and very, you know, trying to make sure everything is actually accurate for all of our reports and get that completed by September 1st. So what we're seeing so far is our agency is really on track and under budget with our spending. And then for our revenue, that it came in about 12% higher than we expected, and we were able to use that in real time to support our supplemental requests. Taking a look at our July revenue, so our first month of the new biennium and kicking off sort of that, we have 9.9 million collected in revenue. Discover Pass was 34, and you can see July is really a month where the overnight stays is a huge impact in revenue. So we have nearly 50% for all overnight stays between camping and roofed. And then license renewal donation, 7%, and all other revenue is 10%. But then here I have a new slide, so I'll take a moment just to kind of set this one up a little bit. And I know some of it might be hard to see. What this is, is just taking the red line is our projections, and it's showing for fiscal year 24 what we are projecting in revenue. So as we go through each month, you will be able to see where we're kind of coming in for that month as well as collective, how our revenue is coming in. So we have, you know, projected 9.2 million for July. It came in at 9.7 million. Above that is the chart, so neither one of us have to do too much math right there on the spot. So about 700,000 change and 7% over what we expected for this July. So it's a great, great start to our biennium. And then lastly, I have a slide here that shows our revenue trends. So this is just the month of July compared to the previous two Julies. And our Discover Pass is continuing to climb, you know, at least for this particular month, month viewpoint. Our camping is down slightly. Again, after the pandemic, we really did increase in overnight. And so we had expected to see a slight decrease. Roofed is also down, but even though it shows at like 15%, which is over last year, when you look at fiscal year 22, which was really a peak year, we are just kind of back to that. So we just had climbed even more after a year that was pretty high. So we're back down a little bit consistent with that. And then DOL donations is up, which is always a bit unpredictable, but month of July, we show 8% higher than last year. So that concludes my presentation. Is, are there any questions?
Fantastic. Always good to be the bearer of good news. I see Commissioner Brown, your hand is up.
Did you say my name?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to ask, well, good afternoon and good report as always. And I'm looking forward to our Budget Committee meeting that I know we've got scheduled headed in advance of our next in-person meeting. Just a couple of things that are a little confusing to me. I want to ask you the difference between Slide 7 and Slide 14. I'm assuming that Slide 7 is just PRSA.
So Slide 7 and Slide 14, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to share my screen again. I'm not as savvy as I'd like to be. So Slide 7 here is showing 2123. And I probably, because I was doing two different slide presentations, should have clarified that. So my first half was 2123, the entire biennium. And this slide here is just the month of July for this new biennium. So it was, it was only the July, so I apologize. That's my, you know, fault for not really clarifying those two slides.
That's, that's great. And then I wanted to ask you on the visitations, you know, thinking about the presentation that I do to various groups and organizations, is the 41 million, is that an all-time high for our agency?
It is. It's, it's hard to really quantify that because around 2016, we installed traffic counters. So we went to a new counting system at that point in time. Prior to that, it was host counters and estimations. And so there are years where you see around 40, 41 million, but we don't feel that that is as accurate or scientific as the traffic counters that we had been using. So I would venture to say I believe it's an all-time high, but it's hard to say for sure.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, if not, oh my gosh, I've lost my. Thank you so.
Thank you.
Sophia, you needed.
There we go.
So I, our next item on the agenda, and we have really caught up now, our Commissioner and Director updates. I understand, Director Dupree, that you do not have any updates, so this will just be commission updates. I might just, I don't know who has updates. So maybe just by, if you want, I mean, maybe just raise your hand if you do. And if everyone does, then we can just go around the room, so to speak. But if you're going to pass, just and also allow me to put it in somewhat more random order, so we don't end up just always in like alpha or reverse alpha. All right, I see Commissioner Brown. I also love this system now. I feel like this is new with, where teams, where they like get number the hands. So Commissioner Brown has his hand numbered first, and then Commissioner Connolly, Bounds, Williams, in that order. Or she just left. Commissioner Brown.
So I'm going to defer any report until our in-person meeting in terms of activities. Had a couple of things that have happened recently that have been interesting. But I wanted to take this opportunity to actually ask a question for the Director. One of our established priorities for this current year was to do a park-by-park inventory assessment with a focus on where are there opportunities to grow the footprint in terms of camping, overnight camping opportunities. My question for the Director is, when will we see something on that front? Will that be something that we'll be talking about in workshop or regular commission meeting in Winthrop? Or what's the status of that? And I have just one other question for her after she answers that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. We will be looking at our camping numbers in the workshop in October. I don't think it will be quite the park-by-park analysis that the Commission would like, just because of the enormous workload that that would take to look at opportunities at every park that we have. But part of it is looking at truly what our camping numbers are. We do have some preliminary information that we're not, we are not at 100% capacity all summer long at every campground. So when people say that there is no place to camp, that we're trying to figure out what that exactly means. If you're looking at trying to camp at Deception Pass during the month of July and you're looking in June for reservations, you're not going to find an opportunity to camp. We have many parks, though, that have significant space throughout the summertime. So truly understanding what it means when there's no camping available is the first question that we're trying to answer. So a park-by-park assessment of where we could add camping is not being done at this point because we don't really know where we would need to add camping in certain areas to to address what we're hearing colloquially. I think that our data is not really scientific enough at this point to be able to answer the questions in the manner that you might like to have them answered.
Well, that's a little bit troubling to me because the Commission did establish as a priority a assessment of where we could add capacity within existing parks, recognizing how difficult, time-consuming and expensive it is to bring new parks onboard. And so I thought we had already asked the question of and answered the question whether there's need for greater capacity. And so I'm a little surprised that we're kind of revisiting the fundamental assumption that drove that priority. But nonetheless, I'll be anxious to see what we bring forward in October. I know that well, I'll stop at that. Thank you.
If you have anything else to add, otherwise, Commissioner Connolly.
I guess I just have, also have a question, and that is, especially in light of the Oregon road fire here in Spokane County, I just wondered if there are impacts to the parks currently across the state by some of the fires that we're seeing.
From what, from my understanding, and I'm sorry, I just got back from vacation yesterday. So the Oregon road fire has, I believe, come up to the boundary of Mount Spokane, but it's my understanding that it did not cross into the park. And so the rainfall that we had in Spokane and some of the retardant that has been dropped and everything has thus far protected the park. What I do know for sure is that no structure, no structures have been threatened. There is no, we did, there was a level three evacuation of Mount Spokane State Park. But the, they were looking at downgrading the evacuation to level two, which allows people to go back into the park. No structures have been lost. No equipment has been lost. No, we don't. No equipment has been lost. No, we don't have any facility, other facilities that have been threatened. So right now I think Mount Spokane is, is sitting in the best position that we could possibly be considering how close the fire came to the park. And then the grave road fire down in near Cheney. I have not heard of any problems with the Columbia Plateau Trail would be the only property that would be threatened by that, that fire. Or the Spokane Plains Battlefield marker up in Airway Heights. So the fire reached just the southern tip of the Air Force Base out there. So it did not go into Airway Heights. And I don't think it, from what I can tell from the maps, and I haven't heard anything from staff that it has had any impact on the Columbia Plateau Trail. So for those two fires, we haven't had any significant impact to any of our park properties.
Great. Thanks. It's hard to tell with those maps because they.
It is. Yeah, I was watching them pretty closely when, when I got back. But the, the Oregon fire was of significant concern to Mount Spokane. But it rained, I think, almost the entire day in Spokane yesterday, which helped significantly in battling those two fires.
Right. Thanks.
Commissioner Bounce.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. After the Ocean Shores meeting, I did visit some of the parks along the shoreline there. And also visited Sylvia and Lake Sylvia and Shafer on the way back home. And then also when I got home the next day, I watched the workshop. So I caught up with the rest of you, I think. And then the second thing is because of what the transition, the Fort Ward PDA is going through it right now. I tasked the real estate committee, which is Commissioner Rod Meldor, Latimer and myself to kind of dig a little bit deeper into what's happening at the PDA. So we had a special meeting to look at the documents and the leases and all that. And we're going to go out there sometime, probably early November to, to make sure we get a really good understanding of the campus and the partners and the tenants. And so we're prepared next January or so, when I think we'll probably be faced with some probably some lease and some budget issues going forward with the PDA. So we're trying to keep a pretty close tab to that. I watched the workshop the PDA board had in their finance committee meeting last week. It's really nice that they, they record those and it makes it easier to kind of keep up. And Mike Sternbeck and I have been in pretty good contact about what's going on out there. So just to assure the commissioners, we're trying to stay up on that as best we can. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't have very much of an update. I thought Commissioner Williams might have, she raised her hand and put it down really quickly. And I thought that she was going to mention the canoe landing. I think we had to, we had to plan, two events planned in this time period, which was to participate in the canoe landing and on Al Kai Beach. And then to, then I guess it was maybe the next day, we were meant to go on a float in the squally to look at some of the property. And unfortunately with low, with the, with the low levels of the river, they weren't able to do the float. But we were able to go to the canoe landing as well as to the salmon. I guess the dinner and the beginning of the protocol that evening. I, in typical fashion, took no photos. Otherwise I would say I would wait until the next meeting and show some photos, but I, I think I only took some of the canoe landing. I would encourage, I don't know if it's still online, but there are some really fantastic videos. The protocols were actually live streamed. And so I jumped on and looked at them, just watched them sometime. In fact, at one point I, I happen, and it's still going on, the Asia Pacific Economic Cooperation Meetings were happening that goes in the month of August. And it is a tradition for actually the Australian government that they do, they do a land recognition before every one of their meetings. And so what was really fantastic was that whenever we had someone from Australia participating in one of our meetings, even if the US delegation didn't do a land acknowledgement, the Australian delegate quite often looked up what they could, what they could about where we were and presented a land acknowledgement, which I thought was really fantastic. And, and so as they were doing that, the various Australian delegations, I, you know, showed them the link to the live stream of the protocol. And they, you know, they all wanted me to email it and they all wanted to watch it and send it back to home because it was really a fantastic opportunity to see sort of, you know, the, to see the, and it really did go on for the whole week. You could have popped on almost anytime, which was very convenient for the Australians because of course in their time zone. And it was, again, it was a really fantastic event, really a great celebration. And I just am so like grateful and honored that I was able to go. So with that, I see two more hands raised. I see Commissioner Rod and Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Rod, would you like to?
Yeah, I should. I had, thank you. I had, I visited the three state parks, the Rainbow Falls and Paradise Point and there is third one, I forgot his name, but in Vancouver area. I saw also the overpass. It was wonderful that going to Rainbow Falls. I have a few items. I don't know if he's on that time. I'd like to sit to, I'd like to sit down with the Dan and talk about few observation. But if we have time, I would be happy to share it with everybody. What is, what is, do you want me to leave it separate or shall we discuss it now? Question. Okay.
You're muted, Sophia.
I am muted. Sorry. I was saying we have about ten more minutes on this item and before we're intended. So we have really caught up on time. So.
Okay, okay. Rainbow Falls, I think I used to camp there. And there is a problem. People have to drive all the way and so have for people to go hiking. And that needs to be addressed. And I think that's priority. Because people, it is really cumbersome for people to just go drive their car to go hiking instead of just crossing the bridge and go to hike. That's to me, I found it should be considered. The other issue is, is when I went to the other parts, they doing excellent job. It's housing. It's difficult to keep people, especially in the suburban Vancouver area. It is difficult. So housing is a big deal to retain a staff over there. I saw them, they are almost at full capacity during the day. I went on Sunday. And I think the staff doing an excellent job. But I think especially in that areas outside Vancouver, most, I, I feel like most of the summer will go to housing. If we provide on the housing, we will be able to retain more people in. So this is, I think I have one more item. I don't, I have it in my notes, but this stand on my head now. That's all.
And I just want to see, I saw Commissioner Williams' hand sort of pop up. Was it related to the same item? Should I just, would you mind? If it's, if it's sort of related and if, you know, you're asking for comments, maybe we'll go that way. And because I know Commissioner Brown is next, but I thought Commissioner Williams might be commenting on the event paper.
Just, you know, Commissioner Rod is correct. And I was just going to save further comments until our October meeting.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Another question for the director, perhaps for John Timmons. Since we haven't been together for a while, a good opportunity with this time to maybe ask a few questions on some operational issues. I wanted to ask again, the director or John.
Sorry, one second. Is John Crimmins online?
John is not.
Okay.
He's listed among, he's listed among the participants. In any event, I'm curious as to whether we've been able to do anything on an interim basis to get the dock at Mystery Bay. The dock, the pier there reopened. Kind of a huge part of the recreational resource there at that little park. Any new on that front?
John is not here today. He was not able to attend yet a personal event that happened this last week that has prevented him from joining us today. Commissioner Brown, I'm not sure about the dock at Mystery Bay. Mike, I don't know if you have any information on that, but we can certainly make sure that we get. Okay, thank you. We can certainly make sure that we get an update to you.
Thank you.
And did you have another question? No, that was, so I do think, so it does seem like, I, you know, I've mentioned this issue about, well, a couple of things, certainly, you know, when we were out on in the island in San Juans, there's housing is really critical there. I mean, it's, it's desperate. In fact, you know, in terms of the park aids and, you know, the way that it shifted around in a couple of the parks. It's some of the most expensive housing and some of the most difficult housing in the state out on the San Juan Islands, I believe. And then, you know, we've discussed that and also in the context of, you know, some of the work that is being done around looking at staff and commissioning and sort of different career paths. So maybe not. I mean, I don't want to have a project for October necessarily, but it does seem like there is maybe this sort of broader interest in, you know, our progress. I know that you've, you know, did something that you've been working on, Mike, as well as John. So maybe at some point in the future, we can, you know, do a little something. And if, I mean, I, I left out Amber, our HR director as well. So between the three of you, whoever it's most appropriate, maybe we can have a bit of an update on, you know, the various initiatives you've been taking. I know it's a, it's a tough nut to crack. And so I'm really happy to hear that you, y'all have been working on it.
Yeah, we can do that.
We can get you some information and maybe a breakdown of what housing is currently available and how we're looking at solving some of the problems and maybe some of the areas that we've had the biggest issues with.
Yeah, and I know that we've had this discussion about the, you know, and again, I think maybe it's informative. I feel like I've had a couple of side discussions, but I, you know, if there's a general commission interest. And again, I'm not sure if we really do it right now, but I think we had asked questions about the different sort of ways that we're able to subsidize housing, you know, the difference between, you know, I think it was interpretive staff not really having access to that versus the commission staff who would be overnight responding to parks and some of the barriers there. And I think it's kind of an interesting, it is, as I said, it's interesting and informative in terms of how it's managed and what the opportunities and barriers are that you're trying to work through. So. So are there any other commission questions, reports? I see your hand. Is it still up, Commissioner Rod? Did you have something else to add? Is that just up from?
No, thank you. I, I agree with what you are saying. So happy we can put this as a priority in our next meetings. Thanks.
All right. So with that, I believe that our next item is that we will go into executive session. And we are very close to the time. There is a different link for the commissioners.
Can we take a five minute break?
Yes, we can take a five minute break. The commission will enter into executive session to discuss ongoing and potential litigation with the commission's assigned legal counsel pursuant to RCW forty two thirty one, ten, one, I. The commission will be in executive session until twelve fifteen PM. The commission will reconvene in open session after the conclusion of the executive session. We will meet at the other link in five, in five minutes. Let's do that.
Thank you.